All meetings order. Stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, if everybody still remains standing, please. Before we proceed with tonight's meetings, I'd like to observe a moment of silence for the victims of the tragedy at the Sandy Hook Elementary School. Mr. McCullough, roll call, please.
Mr. Semenaro. Mrs. Hamel. Mr. Kurtz here. Mr. McCullough here. Mr. McGlaughlin here. Mr. Potts here. Mr. Sheehan.
Here.
Mr. Wolf here. Mr. Basil.
Okay, procedure for public participations, listen on the inside cover when the appropriate point during the meeting, if you'd like to address the board, please approach the podium and the microphone, sign in, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. That being said, are there any public comments on agenda items at this time? Okay, seeing none. We'd like to make a couple of agenda edits. 11D, it is recommended that the Board of Directors approve budgetary transfers for December 2012. 13D, it is recommended that the Board of Directors approve the middle school cheerleading trip to Florida for competition. And 16A, the Board of Directors will approve the committee nominations and chairmanships.
As presented.
As presented. Pardon me? That's 16A.
What was 13D again?
The middle school cheerleading trip to a, for a competition in Florida.
Could I add at no cost to the district?
At no cost to the district.
Does that include fundraising ability? Do we have to write that into the?
Well, that is, well, we're approving the trip and fundraising.
Okay.
Okay, we have recognitions for December. Kyle and Gary Jones, the achievement of Eagle Scout. Step forward, please. Because I know you guys probably don't like to talk, we're gonna ask each of you guys to tell us what you did for your project.
For our project and the AEC program, we power off it. We've developed a strategy and we've got, we've powered it up. So.
And a few words.
For mine, I built six shelves and two leave lanes for children's health future project. But this, I mean, just remember that if you have it, you use all you can. Some people use all their, but this is loose paths.
If you haven't seen it, I know it's hard to see from up there, but they, these are floating around the district in different places, so this is the card that she designed. Thank you very much, nice job. And then, as we normally do at the end of, at the end of, during the quarter, we have the Burke's Career and Technology Student of the Quarter. We have Robert Yanos. Ryan, I'm sorry. Heating and Ventilation, Air Conditioning and Refrigeration. Carl Reiner, Electronic Technology, and Joe Green, Automotive Technology. Are they here? They want to be recognized. It is recommended the Board of Directors approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2012 school board meeting, the December 3rd, 2012 Committee of the Hall meeting, December 3rd, 2012 Reorganization meeting, December 6th, 2012 Budget Workshop.
Second.
Okay.
No, we only did letter A.
They only did letter A.
No one did A.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheehan?
Yes. It is recommended the Board of Directors accept the following financial reports.
A, A, D, N, C.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheehan?
Yes. Secretary of Correspondence?
I have none.
Burke County Intermediate Unit Report, which I believe was sent out.
Yes, the Board of Directors met, and I'm sorry, I don't have the report available in front of me. Some rules, nothing extraordinary. First meeting was new, policy was in place. Keep it brief tonight. I also have the minutes mailed out, and we'll contact you after the meeting.
Okay, the Burke's Career and Technology Board Report.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. The Board did meet on Wednesday, December 12th, at the West Campus for the, initially to reorganize, for reorganization meetings, how first, Oscar Van Veen retained as JSC Chair, and Robert Hattman was retaining his place. Beyond the handout that you have, the significant item of interest is that the BCTC received official PENDO approval for your CBL program in traffic cycle, which was a major accomplishment to get that done. PENDO currently is reviewing the driving course plan to ensure it meets state requirements. And as far as the land acquisition itself, they did receive conditional approval from Burn Township and the site development plan. The conditional, the condition is that they have to come to agreement with their two neighbors on, which is called the screening or foliage, to block view of the site. Once that's agreed to, then they can go ahead and move forward with the purpose of the program. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 23rd, at East Campus at Olney. Public is welcome. That concludes my report.
Student Government, there is no student government report, the legislative report, we, again, we all received the flyer, the one thing I made note of is that the officials are looking at fixes to the state pension plan, which is obviously having issues right now, so Corbett's making a recommendation that the pension plan is somewhere around 68% funded, and it believes, they believe it needs to be around 80% to be healthy. They're looking at selective means to try to get it there, including eliminating, excuse me, limiting who is allowed to get in the pension plan, or potentially shutting the plan down, as many private companies have done, and look at other potential pension options, 401Ks and those stuff. Okay, any questions or comments on our reports? Okay. Moving forward, buildings and grounds?
No report this month.
Okay, financial approvals. It is recommended the Board of Directors approve the attached course, select course, and credit requests for tuition reimbursement, salary step movements, and/or advancement on certification. Do I need a second? Roll call vote.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. And Mr. Sheehan?
Yes. It is recommended the Board of Directors approve going out the bid with the Burke's County Intermediate Unit for Art and General Supplies Custodial, Trash Removal Nursing and Medical Supplies for the 2013-2014 school year.
11B through D, please.
11B through D. Okay, do I have a second? Roll call, discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Daniel Benopfman Club donation, it's very, I appreciate it certainly has been a privilege.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheehan?
Yes. 12, under Personnel, it is recommended the Board of Directors approve the following retirements and resignations.
A through E, please. A through E.
12A through E. Any discussions? Roll call vote?
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheehan?
Yes. Under Programs, it is recommended the Board of Directors approve the school board meeting calendar for 2013.
Recommend 13A through D.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just like to note that with 13D being approved, the Board will be formally approving the middle school cheerleading, fundraising, and trip to Florida.
At no cost.
At no cost to the district. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheehan?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Under Policies, we have the approvals, it is recommended the Board of Directors approve the revised Policy 118 assessments.
Recommend 13A through D.
A through K.
A through K. Okay. The others are first readings. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussions? Mr. Subers, you've approved and reviewed, it's okay. Roll call vote.
Mr. McCullough, yes.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes. Again, I assume that L through U are first readings, so.
So they'll just forward next month.
Correct. 15, under Transportation, is there anything?
No report this month.
Okay, anything under Old Business?
Board appointments.
Yes, committee appointments.
Okay, yes, we do. It's recommended the Board approve the previously.
So moved.
For?
Second.
Okay, for the public, the committees, if I can have my sheet back, please. The committees consist of the Finance Committee, Facility Committee, Meet and Discuss, Revenue and Curriculum, and as, those are standing committees, and ad hoc committees are the Transportation Policy Negotiation and Revitalization Committee, Economic Revitalization Committee. The committees stand as seated last year. The majority, if not all, Board members wanted to remain on the committees, they were on, so there was, there wasn't any shuffling. I will note that the chairs did move a little bit. Mr. Basil's the, still the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Potts, Facilities, Mr. Wolf will be the Meet and Discuss Committee Chair, Mrs. Hamel, Revenue, I am the Curriculum Chair Committee, and then the ad hoc under Transportation, Mr. McCullough, Policy, Mr. Semenaro, Negotiation Committee will be Mr. McGlaughlin, and Economic Vitalization Committee is Mr. McCullough.
I just have one question for Board members. Again, just for clarification, what's the difference between Meet and Discuss and Negotiations?
I did have that conversation with Mr., with Mr. Basil.
I mean, they're the same people, just two different committee chairmen. I'm just asking, can we, what's the point of one and the other? That's all.
Well, I mean, I'll just draw a distinction between, there is a distinction between matters that are subject to Meet and Discuss, and negotiations is the negotiation of a formal collective bargaining agreement. Meet and Discuss could be any matters that the, any of your unions request that the Board meet and discuss with them relating to work conditions.
Yeah, we have one agreement with the classified staff that expires at the end of this school year, and that'll be under the Negotiation Committee. The other, anything along, any of the other, other contracts that crop up between now and then, including budgetary concerns and issues, will be handled by the Meet and Discuss Committee. Okay? And do we have a first and a second on that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, roll call vote, then.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz? Yes. Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Losha Pass.
Under New Business, we have, Mrs. Torsche could come up and discuss these two items she has here, the DVEA agreement with the elementary yearbooks, and I believe under B, it's the Rage Soccer Club offer.
Yes, thank you. That announcement that was approached by the parent teacher organization with concerns that it was a volunteer yearbook at elementary level, they wanted to know what they could do to resolve that, so they have offered to pay $500, pay $500 a second to each teacher who is building a new teacher program, and who would step up and take over the elementary yearbook. We have teachers that have volunteered to do it, and will now have an elementary yearbook being completed through to our PTC. With regards to the Rage Soccer Club, my daughter happens to play for the Rage Soccer Team, and her coach happens to be the academy director. Knowing that schools are in situations of, they did fund kids contract, or at least was coming out with another school who has a turf field, and he said to me, with our school that should be interested in, we're saying, I would transfer it to them for $10,000 a year, working around all school sports, not interfering, and that it was always on first, so I very sincerely wanted to play with them.
Board members, I did receive a correspondence from Mrs. Hicks, President of Daniel Benopf Education Association, they will waive, they will allow stipend for one year for the 12-13 school year from the PTC, because it's a contractual.
Yeah, the question Ms. Benzner raised, is this, is this gonna be a donation to the district, and then the district pays the stipend?
I can follow the letter, it just says that they're willing, for the 12,000, 13 school year, the DVE, I'm sorry, DVEA will permit the PTC to pay a reduced stipend of $500 to the teacher, who will fill in the yearbook coordinator position. This is a non precedent setting, an only valid one school year.
I think, I think, I think the question is, is it a donation to the school, or are they gonna pay it directly?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Well, metaphor, we handle it.
Well, the issue is, if we pay, there's gonna be withholding from this $500.
Correct.
So it's more than $500?
Again, I'm not sure, but.
I would clarify that question, I will back to PTC, we'll make the other issue, the check, and that is the teacher?
Right, because we will have to pay our end of the benefit on that, if it comes to us, then we pay.
Okay.
So it won't be a total savings.
The Teacher Association's okay with it.
Right.
And as far as the Rage Soccer Club offer, I would highly recommend that we, we take that, it's $10,000 that comes to us for use of the fields, that really, we incur no real kind of significant cost against that money, and it could help actually influence our soccer program here as well. So I'm wholeheartedly recommending to accept that.
Are these used, like, maybe during the day or evening?
Yeah, who's gonna do the coordination and the scheduling and things of that nature with the president and the chairman there?
The use would primarily be on weekends, and then training does occur during the weekend, you do the work area, the recycler, to put the schedule around the beginning of the sport, and then training, starting back to the annual, it's not on time, but getting there at the annual, you have more like.
And is there a contract or policy we use for letting others on our fields?
Pretty much the way we would handle this is just filling out the regular facilities request use.
Fill out the facility use form.
That's, that's how this would be handled.
That would be insurance.
Correct. Brian, will we need a formal vote to accept that offer, or?
The arrangement is for them to use our fields?
Yeah, they would, they would fill out a facilities request form, and then.
They would be just a standard process.
Okay. One of the, the questions I had asked, and I think Mr. Super needs to look into it, or if he doesn't already have the answer to that, is that they're gonna be using our facility, do we need, obviously, insurance?
Well, that's what I was just asking, it looks like the facility is used for.
Right, but I'm also looking about, we're gonna have them on our facilities, on our campus, on an ongoing regular basis, do we need to worry about background checks and that type of, of thing also?
You're only required to have the background checks and child abuse clearance statements for employees or contractors under law, volunteers, and they're not really volunteers of the district, you can make that a requirement, though, if, if you wanted to.
I mean, they're gonna be coming, they could potentially come in contact with our student body.
Football house is any different than the band?
They had the.
The football team.
Red City Alamos, would have to come onto our fields this fall, obviously that was on weekends, once one day.
Oh, that, again, that was weekends, this is potentially during the school day also now. That was my, too much.
Not on the school day.
No?
But I think, I'm sure you guys, whenever you go, there's, there's currently at least the Rage Soccer Club in the top office of the school district, so I'm sure that we could share that same reason, what he has with them, to show that's not amazing. He's, you know, I was working for the school district, and going, I mean, how much are you gonna do? To do that.
Right, so it doesn't require votes, just goes through the process.
Well, it'll go through the process, we'll vote on the, on the facilities use form when it comes up. Okay, thanks.
But we should vote on A.
If you're gonna do a contract or lease, that would be different?
Right. We do need to vote on, on, as Mr. McCullough reminded me, on the acceptance of the PTC donation.
We don't know whether.
Okay, we don't know whether they're gonna pay us directly now, okay.
We'll move forward with that, conceptually.
Bring it up, and if we have to vote on it.
Correct.
At the Committee of the Hall, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, any other new business?
None from the administration.
Presentations by the public on issues. State your name. Can you step forward and state your name and address?
Laura O'Reilly, I was 367, I can smell the whole PTC, we can break that. We do write a check, or it's a teacher, but that isn't much more similar for the school district, for the hall.
Okay.
Okay? In regards to, it's just a small example of how there is a lack of communication. We found out as a parent and as a PTC, that there was not going to be a yearbook in the elementary level purely by accident, at one of the fall festivals, when the parent happened to ask, why wasn't anyone taking pictures? And in fact, it was discovered that there were not going to be any elementary yearbooks in the grand studio. Is this like changing? No. But is there, had 2,000 children or whatever, where are the yearbook forms? Why would I have a yearbook for kindergarten before, but not for there? That's just something that needs to be communicated. We hustled to work out a agreement with the, with the teacher team, so that this could go forward here. It didn't need to be like that, and my concern is, we didn't want this decided, it's not a legitimate, it's not a legitimate, and it was never communicated to the public, to the parents, and in fact, some of the schools, they had no idea. So I think that some of the management might wanna look at when making decisions, what makes them want a small decision to the board and in the grand picture, can it have an impact or a root look there to those that are down there? Okay? Okay.
Do you want to just let the company, you want to have it go? It was a project. Yeah.
Every time we can, first of all, in the, say, this current model, the April Hall second T-shirt design, we're having.
That is tomorrow, thank you.
I'm looking for Mrs. Trump Friday tomorrow, I'm gonna tell it, it's on the road. I'm seriously close. Mrs. Trump.
He's got his three minutes, let him use it.
Do wonderful things at these flood drives, and as you can see on my back, there is an open hole for the 10th year. That needs to save 500. Everyone in this room needs to go to donate blood tomorrow at the high school, please. Okay, thank you.
We'll be there.
Now, fact of the matter, I'm hearing that we may be eliminating kindergarten, please. You have a good question.
Again, if you, if you attend the meeting, the administration came back with a balanced budget, and in their presentation, it did have eliminating the full, they have to have kindergarten. It has not been passed, it has not been accepted, it is strictly the way they went about balancing their budget. The Board now needs to move forward and pull things in and out, so don't, don't take it as, as gospel that kindergarten is gone next year.
Is this, is this to, I would say, I take it, Charles, if you was the assistant superintendent and assistant, this time, would it place at the same rate that the outgoing ones was the president's seat that they had, or lower?
Assistant Superintendent was lower.
The Assistant Superintendent came in at a lower rate?
And the business manager was slightly higher.
Slightly higher, but not by, not by much.
It's still a net.
It's still a net, a net E, but yes.
Okay, now, I understand that they're not, these are, you do that, is not mandated? Is the administration at the school mandated?
I didn't understand this. We're having trouble hearing you.
Is the administration, is the administration required at the school district?
Certain levels, certain individuals are, yes.
Okay, because I don't get that, I'm just saying, I'm a school, one principal, one assistant, and we didn't have enough people to stand by the assistant jobs. One, one of us, one superintendent, I don't think we have assistant, one doesn't matter. If we need to, the soccer club, someone takes the thought, these children need representation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for all of you, I just wanted to borrow my, so, I just wanted to take a, been in a 2024, and all started from all time, guys win, and after you win, basically, it is, it is, I'm very happy, but right now, I have two little girls going to Oxy, both doing fantastic, putting out, I just, I'm very concerned, and I just want to record that, I'm very concerned, you know, I saw, we'll be able to go again, or it would be, maybe it'd be very disappointing, I'd be, I'd be down on the list, and I just want to be on record, you know, that's how I feel, so hopefully, like I said, it's just, you know, I did, hopefully that game will go away, when you guys do what, if God knows something else in there, God bless us. something else in there, God bless us. He saved us. But I'll change very quickly. Whatever you have to do. I remember when you did the full day, the half day, our girls did the full day, I was worried about the half day, but you know, I can't turn. But I don't know what I call the turn, but, 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 you know, I'm young, I'm very young, I went to school in high school, and I have family. So we did this final, that many years ago, sure thing, we go here, we did a lot of times. So just want to order that, yeah, that forty five.
Thank you. Can you please sign in?
I'm sorry?
Can you please sign in? We have to have the spelling of your name and your address for the official records.
Okay. Um, this is a question, are we recording or anything? And I also was concerned about whether to read about the possibility of eliminating kindergarten. I think what we would, the city's point, I would like to hear if that's something that is seriously being considered from the past. What I would like to hear is a plan for what the board and the administration could have for when we get children to supply who have not had preschool, who come in first grade at age six, and then when we expect them to be reading officially at a appropriate level come time for the SSS third grade. It seems to me we're looking at a whole, most of a possibility of problems, you know, with the tests, or I don't know, you know, if you get a child without, if you get potential, if you don't have the letters, and then we're going to expect them to be back to those third grade. So I'd like to know what the plan would be with those situations.
Thank you. You're good.
Well, ma'am, you've got to remember, this is the first discussion of it. I'd be very shocked at this board. I, for one, will not, I eliminate kindergarten. I'm, you know, I was on the board when we put a full day. I regretted putting in the half day. Again, like Mr. Shaheen said, it was just a discussion, the first discussion. We gave the administration, we need a balanced budget. Dr. Otto put, and his staff put down everything they could. You know, there are other things on there. Again, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. I mean, getting rid of kindergarten, I think, would be, like you said, hurt children in this district unbelievably. Yeah. So again...
Just, if anybody was here when this was presented, I asked the question, and I was very clear on this, what would happen if the board did not pass a budget? Because, again, as Mr. McCullough said, I'm not voting for a budget that eliminates kindergarten. I'm not voting personally for a budget that eliminates our sports. And therefore, if there's not five votes to pass a budget, and there's five other board members that may or may not agree with me, and if you don't get the five votes to pass a budget, what happens? And that's when it was said, the state can remove us and come in and pass a budget themselves. And in my opinion, let them do it then. There's a lot of things in this budget that are questionable right now. We don't know the revenue from the state, so we had to put in what we got last year. We have no idea how much more or less the state will give us. We don't know what our local taxes are going to bring based upon transfer taxes and a number of other things. So there's placeholders for that number. We're working with our contractual partners, even as we speak. We've met. And we're going to be continuing meeting to find out where there is some possibilities of getting some concessions there. Nobody wants to see kindergarten go. Nobody wants to see our sports programs go. So we're working in that direction, but we had to have someplace to start. In the years gone by, we came in and said our gap is $5 million, and then we whittled that gap down. And that's where the yearbooks went last year. There is a line item in that spreadsheet we all got that said, "Yearbooks." I mean, I remember it. Mr. McCullough remembers it. Again, it was a small line item. It went. This year, we're going in the other direction. We're letting them bring us a proposal as the administration, and then we're going to work to put things back in. It just, it saved us probably two months of the process. So that's where we're going. There's no way this board wants to eliminate kindergarten.
I just want to add to the process, and I know some of you were here for the first presentation. We selected things that are not required, and as much as I hate to say it, I've not been happy with things that we've had to cut as well. But the fact of the matter is, if you look very closely at the law, kindergarten is not required. Sports are not required. I'm going to do everything I can to keep them. I just want you to know that the facts are in the law, and you can have our solicitor here verify that. Both of those things are not required under the law. The other thing I would like to say is when we did this budget model for the school, for the school board, we also put in a maximum tax increase, which never makes anyone happy either. So if, for those of you that weren't here, we talked about different levers or levers, however you want to pronounce that, that we can pull. One of them is taxes. One of them is program cuts. A third one of them is looking at potential revenue concessions or bargaining, or whatever you want to call it. And then beyond that, you have your fund balance, which is, as most of you that have been coming to our budget meetings, is kind of like your savings account. And you don't want to touch that either.
And referendums.
And then the possibility of a referendum. And if anybody's followed the history on a referendum, they go over like lead balloons. So we're in a real tough spot. So I know your tendency is to want to come up and express your concern, and sometimes it is anger. I understand that. Believe me, I've not been happy about the things that we've had to do to balance the budget. But those are the financial and fiscal realities that we deal with. I don't want to see these cuts. I don't, I also would not like to have to burden the taxpayer anymore either with further taxes. But if you look around at all facets of our society in the public sector, taxes are a big discussion nationally. They're going to be a big discussion locally. So we continue to appreciate, every one of you that comes up here and says you want to cut those, don't want to cut those things, we don't either. But at the same time, if we go out there and post the 1.2 mil increase, this room's going to be filled with a whole different group of people concerned about the potential, what's going to happen to their tax bills as well. So I, again, I said it three years ago, I said it two years ago, I'm going to say it this year. There are people beyond the people that sit up here that you need to start calling on the telephone and writing them letters and putting pressure on them. The board can only control so much. And to be honest with you, between the board and the administration, we're trying to make the best we can of a very, very difficult financial situation.
Uh, last, uh, panel, so, um, first was, uh, we started across this year ago, we started this space, that's it, and, you know, we, uh, we need this space, you know, maybe this in the next three years, four years, we're going to work on that.
Again, anything we take out of the fund balance is gone. Last year, we used fund balance, so we automatically start in that hole. So if we take $1.2 million out of the fund balance that balances budget, we start automatically before we even look at teachers' contracts, administrative contracts, transportation contracts, we automatically look at a $1.2 million deficit, right down in there. So that's part of the issue, is keep having to tap that fund balance. We automatically start in that hole, and we move forward. So right now, we don't know what next year looks like. We know that, again, contractually, with the contractual agreements we have, it's going to be a two, two and a half million dollar hole if we don't even start with any fund balance.
The other thing that drives it, Mr. Smith, is the, Mr. Shaheen, if you remember at the beginning of the meeting, talked about the pension issue. And over the last three years, in order to adequately fund that pension, the district has seen that pension increase go up four, six, seven, eight percent. I don't even really know the number, but I can tell you, I think this year, the increase over last year is $1.3 million. That figure alone would save kindergarten and sports just like that. But that's a fixed cost that we have that we can do nothing about. So when we sit here and tell you that we need the citizens of the community and across the state, because we're not the only one suffering this, to reach out to our state legislators and the governor, I'm dead serious about that. We can't change that law. We get a figure, and that's what we have to plug into the budget to fill that gap. That hasn't affected one person in this room. It has not one thing to do with program, but we have to pay that debt. There's really not much we can do about it.
And, uh, we had, uh, this had, maybe it was last year, I couldn't recall, did this school work out, technical or some sort, or, uh, some direction? Our base, uh, communicated from actually this?
Yes, I actually had written, I put together, yes, I did. I'd be happy to do that again.
Yeah, if you could do that again, post it and post it on the...
I mean, we have...
...district webpage, so that residents can, then again, send that back out.
Through various associations, professional associations that I'm, I deal with, superintendents, we talk all the time. And we can certainly put together some talking points that citizens can use. I would be quite honest with you, the legislators start to see those same letters. Those heartfelt calls that you make that are not on that letter, although those letters are effective, are important, where you just reach out as an individual and say what's on your mind. I think they listen. I just don't know what really is going to bring all of them to action as, as we go through this difficult time. And this year's not the end of it, as you alluded to. This is probably another two or three years till districts are in the clear. Hopefully, the economy picks up and we start to, you know, see different sources of revenue within the district. Right now, that's just not the case.
Our district is a year ahead. Like, it's, you know, like being, but we're, if you start looking at some of the districts out there, and I know everybody's concerned about Daniel Boone, and if you start looking at some of the other districts across the state, they're doing this year what we did last year. And so we're, we were ahead of it. Has a lot to do with the fact that the district has very little industry base, so when the economy hit hard, we got hit early. But, you know, we'll, all I can say is, having sat here for just now my eighth budget, if come February, and that's probably a pretty good estimate, if come February, we're still talking about these same cuts, then they'll start looking serious. Because we're going to be having January and February meetings, budget-only meetings, to look at what else we can do. We're going to be in negotiation meetings with the teachers, with the classified staff, with the administration, with our transportation folks, to see what we can do to drive some of these costs down. So come February, if we're still here, then they're serious.
Just, uh, one other question. Um, we've missed a couple, uh, items on the table to potentially, uh, if we do specifically kindergarten, sports teams that are not mandatory to turn out, require, are there alternatives to those students to, would miss out on potential sports for kindergarten, uh, does the district help, and, I don't know, find alternatives?
I know that we're currently exploring other alternatives to those programs, but it's a little too early to talk, you know, to put some details out, because I know Mr. Bezos had some conversations as far as how to fund and how to present those. So, you know, let's, you know, see where they go first before we bring them out publicly and mention them. But we're continually ongoing, looking for different ways to fund them and other way, and other alternatives.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Otto, I have a lot of your professionals, and you all have done all that. Uh, I was asking, I don't force on myself, and if you just want to, I would be interested in taking so, you know. All right, I'll say this. Don't report, here's more money back. Our children that are facing more of a problem than I've heard of before. He's one of the way that said, uh, thank you for talking to him.
Excuse me. Um, is there a committee, my daughter, she has a two, three, four little son, right? Is there a committee that is looking at developing future budget plans? Or is it everybody, you're in a situation where you start all over?
That's the finance committee.
The finance committee, okay. Um, is there a, do you know whether you're involved with the process of negotiating with the teacher here?
No, we don't, we do not get lawyers involved with negotiations at this time. Not that it won't happen moving forward in the future, because it has been discussed. But the teachers do have a contract, and we prefer, we just, we work with them within the confines of that contract, so.
Right. But if we, for the next negotiation of, I can see, with how for a change in their contract, is there a labor lawyer involved in that process?
No.
No.
No. The contract is already in place. Our attorney and their attorney reviewed the contract initially, and both agreed that the contract is legally binding and everything is out in the open. But for us to go back in and sit with them and negotiate something that they don't have to give us back and bring an attorney in is not the way we've been moving forward. We sit as a board, four members of this board sits with their negotiation committee, and we come up with, you know, things that we can live with and things that they can give back, and we bring it back to the board, and they bring it back to their membership, and it's voted on.
So the background, the background of the people we talked to, or is a legal labor background?
No.
I'm wondering if there's, there's a way through party union to get out from underneath the divisionary?
No, there is not. Not in the state of Pennsylvania for the Education Association.
Is the education, uh, in fact?
No, that's, that's all state law. That's, you know, those obligations are defined in the Pennsylvania State, uh, School Employees Retirement Code. So that's all, the obligations are defined by the, by the state legislature. And then there's a, there's a PESER submission that sets the annual rate, contribution rate. And we're bound, we're bound by that.
So you can, you know, it's very difficult.
It's not a negotiable issue. Yeah, this is not private industry. This is not private industry. We are bound by what happens at the state level.
So if we, you know, we have a lot of, you know, we can't, for...
And honestly, when this contract expires and we negotiate the next contract with the teachers, we're bound by PESERs again. We cannot say, let's exclude that from this agreement. It is, it's what we have, we have to work with.
Unless the legislators change.
Right.
Okay, so then they, you know, they...
Correct. The man made it expensive to do.
Correct. Yes.
It would be, uh, would it be beneficial for those schoolers to look into, perhaps, hire a little laborer to look at contact to approach things that could be taken out with minimal impact on the employee, but maximum impact on the visitor?
We don't, we don't...
What?
The contract's in force.
The contract's in place.
But is there anything other than the negotiation?
Yeah, well, it takes two parties to agree to open a contract.
Correct.
Okay?
Yeah, but if sports teams are losing jobs...
Well, you know, again, you, okay, you had your three minutes. We understand what you're talking about, and we're working on that.
We have to vote on the yearbook. We have to vote on the yearbook thing. Remember, did we have clarification or...
Okay, okay.
Directly.
Any, any other public comment?
All right.
We got one coming up.
Uh, Paul, I was just wondering, I was wondering, I was wondering, I was wondering, when it was originally posted, without the possible cuts, if they had those, had actions for the triple effect where, um, eliminating kindergarten and all sports as well as possibly are losing all of their savings and all that, you know, and, um, sitting back on tax, is, um, what is your plan for when our district has lost all of these states, there's no way for now, we can't do, have all of those sports and those programs to have all of the children in college. There is nothing for them to do, as an incentive, to not go get in trouble, to work hard, to, to, to be, to be part of these programs, when I would, if I would definitely consider moving out of the district, to another district, as well as a lot of parents, or I would have to pay higher taxes for less opportunities for my child in the school district. So when you have all these standards, and you're out of the district, and nobody wants to move in for the district like this, how is raising taxes going to help when you have nobody to work here?
Let me just, I'm going to, just go over one, because we may seem like we get frustrated, okay? We first all saw the preliminary budget from the administration a little over a week ago, okay? There are no contingency plans. Obviously, we all know that if we were to eliminate kindergarten and we were to... eliminate kindergarten and we were to eliminate sports, the property value of everybody's houses are going to plummet, okay? People are going to move out of the district. They're not going to be able to sell their houses at what they got. We understand the trickle-down effect. It is, we all own houses in this district. We all have children in, except Connor, we all have children in the school systems, okay? My children came all the way up through the school system since second grade. So, most of everybody on the board here. So, we all understand that. This is our first blush at it, okay? Nobody is happy. And as I said, you've had at least two board members already. Publicly said, they're not going to vote to eliminate kindergarten, okay? And I'm probably going to tell you, if you look around the rest of them, nodding their heads, sports and everything else, we're not going there, okay? We have to start somewhere. And we started with the proposal. Now, we need to go out and look at other sources of income, other sources of revenue, and other sources of cost cutting to help us out. And that's where we are right now. We're in the negotiation committee. We had the meeting discussed where we're looking with the teachers, the administration, transportation, going back to our transportation partners and saying, okay, can we eliminate a bus? Can we tighten up this run here? These things all come into play. And if we're able to do some of this stuff, that money starts adding up again. And believe me, kindergarten and our sports programs will be some of the first stuff that comes back in.
I understand you just talked about this too, but my question, when they proposed this to you last week, when you worked on this, is this something that they discussed about, or they thought about, or they were thinking?
Oh, I'm sure, they did sit. They sat as.
And they mentioned to you about how they expect that to work.
No, they sat as an administrative council. I mean, Dr. Otto's speaker, they sat, and he's asked his administrators to come up with ideas that they're not happy about, okay? And they came up with a way to balance the budget. They obviously know that if we have to, or nine other people that sit here, because we get removed from office, have to approve removing kindergarten, that they need to come up with a program to then bridge preschool or no preschool kids, children into first grade and bringing them up to speed. It's nothing that, and they don't want to take that chore on either. So, that's obviously got to be worked on in the background, because you just don't decide to eliminate a program, and then all of a sudden, come next September, have to have it run. They need to be running it and working that process now, so.
And just because Dr. Otto and the administrative team, you know, gave us this, does not mean they recommend it. They were asked to give a balanced budget. They went through everything in the district and cut with data is not mandated. That's what they gave us. That does not mean they support it. I'm sure if you ask almost everybody on that council, they do not recommend getting rid of kindergarten or sports. But that's not what they're directing us. Their directive from ours was, give us a balanced budget. That's what I'm saying. So, I want to make sure that you understand, and it wasn't Dr. Otto that he actually thinks that's a great, good idea. I'm pretty sure, I know for a fact he doesn't. Same way with limiting sports. But again, he gave us what we asked him, a balanced budget. That's what we gave. So, I want to make that clear, that I'm not saying their administrative, you know, supporting any of that either. You know, neither is the board and neither is the administration. But we did what we instructed them to do.
I'm trying to ensure that's something that helps out.
No, you know, and they're the ones in education, not us. I mean, I'm pretty sure they would know even better than to say us, even just as parents, that yes, kindergarten. And we also get back the value of our homes. We all own homes in this district. You know, if we do give them all that source, of course, I'm, you know, aware that my house will plummet with the value of my house. Everybody's house will. So, again, we're trying to save everything we can, but right now, they did what we instructed them to do. That's it.
If I can just add, prior to 2008, when the, I'll just say it, when we had our second major financial depression in this country, it would be nothing to come out at the beginning of the budget season and be $500,000 apart. I would love that now, because you could raise taxes, use a little fund balance, and everybody would go home. That's not the reality anymore. Now, we're looking at seven-figure deficits, so we have to deal with them. And I'm happy that the board members spoke up. We certainly are not recommending any of those cuts. There are a number of cuts we made a couple of years ago that I still haven't, we had to make them. And just so you understand that for everyone in the audience, that's the context in which we're working. None of this is pleasant, none of it. But at this point, right now, I hate to be cold and calculating about it for now and today, it's a math problem. And we don't want to make those program cuts. But at the same time, as was delineated by the solicitor here and the board president, we have an obligation under the state constitution and state law to come to the public of this community with a balanced budget, or then we have other problems on our hands as well.
I would just need to follow the budget workshops that we'd be holding and the red handouts.
Yeah, I think you jump in here if you may try a little bit. I just want to clarify on the budget process and how to change this year from previous years. In previous years, we've been struggling toward the end of when we can approve the budget, finding places to cut back and trying to work to close the budget working up. This way, we're trying to work down that incentive. We're being given a proposed, not a proposed balanced budget, but we're given a budget that is balanced, and we're trying to work in reverse way we've worked in the past, because that hasn't been working very well, at least in my opinion. We're trying to budget, and I'm more intelligent with it, and there are going to be, it's just a different way of going about it. Because, of course, none of these changes are really been recommended to this point, like they said before. And I like to say to the government, we can't print our own money, and we have to balance the budget by a, it's our job. So, as you find, we're trying to do it in a different way, and this is extreme. And I am of that as well. I mean, raising taxes, voting index, cutting all these programs, it's crazy. But it's just a different way we're going about it this year that will hopefully lead to a better climate and interest paths, even though it may be pleasant perhaps.
I just want to clarify again, for those of you, we post all of the minutes to these meetings, that meeting included. I said very clearly at that meeting that if I had to balance the budget, I had to balance the budget tomorrow, this is what we'd have to do. But a lot of things can happen between now and June. The board can choose to raise taxes to 1.2 mils, or they can choose somewhere in between, or choose nothing. They can choose to, the board in its power could say, you know what, we have about, what, $2.5 million in fund balance? So, you know what, wipe it out. And then, you know what, next year, we've got an even bigger problem. That, in my opinion, I'll say it now, would not be responsible budgeting. And I don't think the board's prepared to want to do that either. It also would be irresponsible to cut kindergarten and sports. We realize that. But at the same time, we have an obligation to come forward with a balanced budget. It's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen in January. It happens by June 30th. So, there's a long, long way to go. I know that doesn't always sound reassuring, but that's, you know, that's about the best answer we can give you now.
I want to bring you to tell me, please, PTC purposes, communication, you guys talked about minutes dating to propose budget. This is the first I remember that was a board meeting. A little bit is above my head, it's like not consistent, and here's a part of the file. Do you guys post the proposed budgets out there?
Yeah, yes. If you go to the webpage, Mrs. Tenzin could probably direct it. Not only is the budget, proposed budget's been put out there, Dr. Otto put a PowerPoint together to present how he got there, and that is also, was posted the next day, so that everybody can go and get that and be able to sit there and go through the process they did, how they did it. Not only that, but there's history. Whereas the last three years, I believe.
Correct.
What we had to do when we started the process, the gap we had to close, and all that, and that entire process.
Well, you tried to go through the fiscal committee, you know, does that change?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
And Mr. Harper, there are audios of this meeting, gentlemen.
Yes, it's recorded.
And the final, this meeting.
One thing I would like to add, since you're relatively new and you're getting involved, which is great, we had to pass a preliminary budget in January. And again, does not mean it's final. Nothing is in or out of the budget till the final budget in June. So, again, if there's, you know, come January, and when we pass the preliminary, some people will come back and say, we eliminated this, or we added this, or we did this. That's not true. We can change our mind up until June 30th.
Yes, yeah. I mean, that is, and just to, that is, we hear a lot of times, it's misrepresented in the press, or people, we see emails start coming out. In January, we have to approve a preliminary budget. And that preliminary budget will probably look very much like what Dr. Otto presented.
Correct.
It's just, it's one of these steps the state put in place that we have to do. We have to pass a balanced budget. And we continue, until, I think it was June 24th, whatever that last Monday is, that budget we vote on is the official budget. So, there's a number of steps we have to do that mean absolutely nothing, except checking the boxes, so to say, that the state.
So, what I'm trying to say is kindergarten and sports might be in the January cut. That does not mean it's going to happen. For people, you know, again, just to give you a little history, I have a works.
Have you also considered, I don't know, working more closely, like the organization, like the PTC, maybe doing something, maybe, I have this kind of website, he can take a little bit of, sometimes if you disseminate information and info like that, it might just spread to the town, you know, they.
Well, they're aware, I'm pretty sure they're aware what it is. I know the teachers are aware, again, they attend the budget workshop, and everybody there was told where it was going to be. We had it up on the screen. You know, there was talk, well, you know, why don't you send, we're not going to mail things out, obviously, because you've got postage. You know, we don't have everybody's email address, so we really can't necessarily send it out that way. So, it is posted. The newspaper will hopefully report that, you know, that the PowerPoint and the budget is sitting there, so you can go, you know, with location, be able to go and get it.
All our meetings are on the front, very front, first webpage of the district. All upcoming meetings are posted.
Also, Redwood Ensign will be meeting Wednesday night, and I believe that's Matthew Ford, going?
Yes.
So, and they're going to be working with the sports and music boosters, try to sell some programming in the clubs, and so, everyone, please, please attend.
Brian, did you have anything for executive?
Can I have your name and your address? As of the time of the issues, I'm looking at it year after year, but it's on the announce and always come back to the tax care, with their handout for res charging taxes. According to this past week, there were two articles that were in date, or one out of the league for who funded a $94 million district deficit, as well as $5 million shortfall. And then, a day later, counting from our latest taxes, it's 23% as well as the whole Obama national taxes that are coming down fast. So, when I conclude this, none of the leaders are pursuing our taxes on them. As long as they can come back, know that we're going to quietly give our taxes and say, no, none of you call, none of you reform, our kids are flying back more for our education, and it's unacceptable in America. People are losing their homes every year for the rest of taxes. This is against the Fourth Amendment that we can draw security in our lives. We must settle it for a very low standard in our years and just willingly taking over our taxes. And we never want to count the taxes as long as we continue to do so. So, when I'm proposing, it's going on all the law, that we need to say, until you remove our taxes in law, until you can present a lawful file when balanced the budget, we don't have to pay taxes in law. I say to folks, if we all start again, to really take action on our behalf, we only left that war, the war of the men, the war of the men. And it's years and years, I've spent in the cities and the renovations, the extravagance spending. So, I'm all for the taxes on the law. If you think about what we're calling paying taxes, until we have responsible leaders to present balanced budgets, that's all I'll be able to.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Greg Ruh, 57, I think there's a whole issue about the kindergarten, the mess, very good job, they know, it's not sad, it's quite important, make sure that stuff really is to say, I do appreciate that. I do have some concerns, though. My last one, kind of led into the past, there's been a history of missing funds last year, while we were racing, talking about the full day that day, we were going to all say, my kid, you are in, we go, this is the most, which was quite a chance, my daughter now, and there's a lot of evidence that she do it, not even a student. Are there anything like that, is there anything like that coming up this year or next year or two, that is, they consider that the company should be, that you guys should take a look, play out the worst, they do the business, they do the strategy, that we're already trying to sell it, you know, the same title, so they may not.
Right now, their presence is not, you talk about any type of capital project such as this. But let me just back up. I've been on the board eight years. This building was built prior to myself even coming on the board. And before that, I mean, when the board, the district decides to build a building, it gets decided probably two or three years before it's even up and running. So, and we just don't, and I did ask this question, we just don't go and decide we're going to build a building, go out, float a bond, buy some land, and put a building up. You've got to go through an entire approval process, one of which is to submit to the state the need for it. And at the time that they built the middle school, at the time they built APC, at the time, uh, AIC, excuse me, and MEC, we had a growth curve that we weren't going to be able to sustain, be able to handle. Unfortunately, once we got the buildings up and running, the economy dropped out from under us. And, you know, if you look at ME, if you look at MEC, if you bend to the monocracy, that building was done as economically feasible as possible. I mean, I see, you know, you see missed quotes in different social medias and everything else, $130 million and things like that. There's nowhere near any of that kind of money. But again, we went through that process, and we submitted to the state, and the state could come back, and I believe the state has come back, the other districts, you don't need another building. So, I mean, that was the process. I mean, we renovated the old APC, because we didn't want to have to build another building. We renovated the old middle school up at the high school, so we wouldn't have to, you know, so we'd be able to use those rooms. When we were looking to eliminate kindergarten, the stadium was already in. That was money that needed to be spent. You could not give it back. You could not, wait, you could not, you could not give it back, you could not save it, you could not, it had to be spent. And it was done based upon bringing other projects in under budget.
Correct. And I also like to add, the stadium, you've got to remember, if everybody wants support in this district, we were having trouble with our insurance carry. The stadium was old, it was outdated, it was almost uninsured. We had no choice. If not, we would not have a stadium in this district. It's not like the board wanted to go out and do it, like the stadium was only 10 years old. That stadium was 40 years old, Mr. Super's correct. We had a little trouble with our insurance carriers, and it was unsafe. So, everybody thinks we did it because the board wanted a new one. No, we would actually shut it down, which not only we would have not had, you know, gymnasium classes, we would not have any sports. It wasn't like, we were almost forced to do that in some regard, because we had, the board, the district hasn't done it for years. We were the only one with a cinder track. You know, so it wasn't like we decided, oh, we got money, let's just go, you know, do it. It was a necessary need of the district, and like Mr. Sheen said, the buildings are built for the size of, we were probably allowed to have at the growth of our district. Unfortunately, you know, we can't predict everything. If we could, you know, I've been on the board 12 years, I would have known that, sure, I would have built it. But you know what, if declined, we were busting out of the seams. So.
And we had people in trailers.
I agree, I'm trying to change for the taxpayers, for that, if you were basically set, no, they're going to stay with it. I have heard yourself, part of second, that's very, this, it's a lot of this today.
Yeah, there's a big time, you got to look.
It's a very last night, it really does affect us. You know, when we moved in, I moved in here, three, four years, one of the reasons that we turned this district over, and he made other things, like, I grew up in college, like, it's always true, people didn't earn this great. My youngest, we were in our pockets for that, for that, actually, your parents, great, asking me to get our next year, we're living, we're many, they are, you know, and that's money back in our pocket. Then we come in here, you know, oh, now that we're going to tax, right, but we also don't pay for, you know, like, we're paying one. And that's some of the other ramifications outside of this school. I heard you guys say, you weren't getting the, I'm just pointing out, despite some of the goal I go forward, for the taxes, it's, you know, like this, it's timeless. to the past years, it's, you know, like this, it's, it's kind of this, it's kind of like, it's a way more positive. And it really does create noise. And like I said, I, I heard what you guys said about fighting for kindergarten, fighting for these, I, I think you guys, I think you're harder, I want you guys to do that.
For, for good or bad, I've been on the board long enough when kindergarten was happening. One of the accomplishments that I did was put whole day kindergarten in. Started as a final program. It was, I was, you know, again, very proud of that as a board member. Unfortunately, you know, I had to go back to that. You know how hard I wanted to vote on something that you put in place? Of course I did. The same way, everybody's down to build whether it be the buildings or stadiums. And I've been all long enough that most of these buildings were built under me. At the time, though, that's what it was. And that's not an excuse, it's fact. Same way with the stadium. It was, it was an older stadium. Of course, again, I'm a taxpayer here. It, it, sitting here trying to cut programs, I don't start, meaning like, full day kindergarten? Absolutely drives me down. My kids are almost out of the district, but that doesn't mean I want to cut them. And again, I'm looking at the value of my own home.
I have a little comment as well, I need to, I'd rather you have these in your eyes. Yeah, there wasn't any renovation of the stadium, my opinion is, the whole redo of the stadium was not.
But that's your, that's your.
That's my thing, that's just, you know, within the stadium. We've sent a lot of money into party stations, man, and it's.
Wait, 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 let me finish.
Wait, guys.
You're not going to get into that.
Can I, all right, I'm sorry, I don't need to rude, but there were, there were a lot of systems that were made in this district. And the building of this school, with the panoramic library, that panoramic library is not assessing. The AIC, the Monocacy Elementary Center. Now, high school was renovated a couple of years ago, and the new apartment that was built less than fifteen years ago, I believe, time of merit. There were a lot of building projects done in this district that were not needed as necessary as we think. Now we're talking, we've been having a study, not just this district, but last year, about potentially shutting down elementary school potentially. We just built a little mini school a few years ago. Yes, the statistics, the figures showed that our enrollment was going up, but wasn't at speed with we need to build a building. Was there a problem with it? I had to go to straight eight right now. There was no problem with it. There are a lot of kitchen projects made in the past that, you know, they might have been wrong. And I, I disagree with some of these persons, and you can just.
Well, again, you know, we as a board need, we, we've got to stop blaming past boards, okay? Because we do that.
We need to know what our doctors, we need.
Right, but we, we blame past boards way too many times. To understand that a building project, and, and then we're going to move on from this, because I.
You go ahead. First, first thing, I think, you know, it's, it's, there are people on the board that understand it too. And I appreciated the board's hesitation for a while. That was my intent, though, to bring out all of this, and the way it was raised. My intent was to ask, are there other projects?
There are no other projects planned, right. But, but I just want the public to understand that when a district decides to build a building, let's take monocracy as an example. That is not done overnight. I believe that was a seven-year endeavor. Okay? Uh, that building, and again, I'm going to bring back the fact I was on the board eight years. That land was already bought before I got on the board. So, you go back eight years, okay? And that land was already bought. The, the architect was already selected. And for the most part, plans prior to me even sitting on the board, so that's eight years. That's how far ahead the state makes you plan and show projections. So, yes, the projections were correct. You may not have liked them, they fell through. But eight years ago, the projection said we needed more building. If you think, go back, if you were here eight years ago, okay? Eight years ago, the developments up off Old Airport Road on either the right or the left-hand side weren't there. Molotkin's development wasn't there, okay? They were not there, okay? None of those developments. Half of Amity Gardens, where I currently was, was not, a lot of those houses were not there. So, yeah, the projection said we needed it. They put it in. Now, nobody looked at what, nobody had that crystal ball to be able to tell what was going to happen in, in two thousand and eight. Yes, you're right. Do we need the, the panoramic? I mean, we can go back and second guess ourselves forever. It's there, we've got to live with it. They're, moving forward, it's a lesson learned. There are no building, there are no capital projects currently, at least in the, in the way near future. And, and I for one, as I said, this is my last year, will be out there with you guys if they decide they want to build another building. Standing in front of there saying, we don't need it, okay?
If you guys are mentioning options that you have, and you say that you raise that, if you all respect for that, if you all mention that there's extra revenue streams, are there any new external revenue streams that are on the rise that you can let the public know about? So, we have some reassurance, if there is some potential, or is there anything out there that we need to do now?
Well, there is a, I mean, again, the Revenue Enhancement Committee that, that comes, that meets on Wednesday is exploring advertisement in our buildings. Um, they're, they're exploring, um, they're, they're working with the, the, a foundation that we've, we've put together and that, that we're running with, trying to find other external revenue sources to help, you know, fund some of these programs. Well, again, I mean, again, I just, I just, again, the advertisement is one of them. We looked at, you know, there's, there's several uh, organizations that, that will put advertisements in the buildings. But again, it's not something that happens overnight, okay?
The other thing, the other thing you can do, take your local municipalities, forget businesses. Burgeboro's, Burgeboro's by Landlock, and I represent Burgeboro, but I think, you know, there's nowhere else to go. But get Union and Amity to allow businesses in there. Without, without, we don't need students, we need revenues. And again, again, I'm not, I'm not criticizing you, I don't know what's going on those two. So, I'm, I'm not making out that they're not doing it, but I think we need the industry. That's where, we need that. We have to. So, work with those two municipalities for us. And only because Burgeboro's, there is nowhere to go.
We are a small spot in the valley. We've been that way.
Correct.
Since I've been there from day one.
That would definitely raise.
I mean, a big difference is Exeter and Daniel Boone, Knightdale. I think Amity's getting more premier with industry. I think Union Township needs to step up.
Absolutely.
I think all of us.
That's, Burgeboro's working, I think, to the bridge that revitalizes the bridge. I think that helps with, uh, Mr. Miller, as we're wondering, since we're in the year, right, revitalizing the Burgeboro deal. Other than that, what else can we add?
Bring it in.
So, we need, we need the industry.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I'm ready to go to the drive.
Can you please sign in? Okay, thank you.
Uh, the gentleman, I don't know if you can hear that. Um, can I just close the school? Is that possible?
We are, we are currently looking at the alternatives of closing a building.
Is there a broad?
Uh, that's basically it, yes. We're looking at being able to combine some elementary classes and, well, again, the, the, the biggest thing is now is offsetting, shutting a building down, and then what does that do when we have to then go and increase transportation costs to get students that would go stay to Burgeboro? And again, please don't think this is what we're going to do. But to go stay from Burgeboro to MEC or to APC, there's a transportation cost. So, it is currently being looked at, building grounds are looking, are looking at it again, um, and, and decide whether it, it makes sense. I mean, it, on the top line, it could be half a million dollars, but by the time you get done moving numbers around, if it's a couple, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, and you get the disruption of, of a child being on the bus for an extra half hour, and it really doesn't save us anything, we need to decide whether it makes sense to do that.
Okay, um, and talk about the district, I know this was a recent, not shared, about the racetrack.
The, the racetrack is, the racetrack is, is, is not out of, in our control. It's under Union Township's control. They have submitted their, uh, they're submitting paperwork, and they're moving along at the pace that the, the racetrack organizers are moving along.
And I would suggest, if you live in Union Township, maybe you would attend their meeting.
Yeah. I, I can tell you that we're, we're not budgeting any revenue for the racetrack next year, because we've been told not to. Probably two thousand and fourteen.
For two years, actually, so maybe the people in Union Township, that knows meetings.
Thank you.
Joe, here's Merckboro. Um, relating to the racetrack, just for some, because this district, happy, the only thing to love is to some form of alcohol, the music tax, so like, uh, like number of users fee, or some of that, uh, maybe that's a nice.
No, we used to be able to do that, but it was part of the, uh, tax reform legislation. Those abilities have been removed from school districts.
Okay, okay. Uh, a couple things, um, number of people that we have, right, we're going to take your stretch time. Our school district, they're all, uh, busting the seams with being kind. I mean, we did have people in trailers, we had people in hallways, uh, we couldn't use, you know, we were using corridors for classroom space, we were using cafeteria to play from space. They, you know, the, the needs would say, oh, facilities is necessary. Uh, a nice component of a community, you know, is also within the school district and the system. You know, so to say, at least say, you forgot you're going to Italy, you know, because being a responsible, in a position. Uh, I'm, 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 I like that.
Okay.
You know, the other thing is relative to the stadium, which was worked out, which was an accurate saving. That stadium, you know, was constructed based upon saving that is done by a number of other projects by, uh, David Robbins administration that's super dependent on our schools. You know, so there was money left over, and as Mr. Sirmer said, I, you know, you could not, uh, she mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, and I, as you said, the money could not be spent for anything other than capital approvals. And it was the last project to be done, that, you know, and it was approved, uh, the expenditure of those particular funds. Uh, as the gentleman that you mentioned, that you're not being good stewards, I will give you credit, uh, you know, indeed, good stewards, I'm going to agree, uh, most people would not be aware, and the, the information that was in the newspaper was incorrect. They, you know, if you please correct that, that would be good. Uh, I believe, uh, our expenditure per student is second, close in accounting.
Correct. It was.
The only school district that is well, that Daniel Boone, and the expenditure per student, is the Redding School District. Is that correct?
I'm not sure. Last time I looked, yes, you were correct. Probably second or third from the bottom, yes.
You know, to, to me, that is the true expenditure of our, uh, I mean, we, we did experience extraordinary growth in our community. A component of that growth was the quality of schools that we even had. That makes a strong community. That, you know, and, and you want to visit that. So, I know you're doing the best job that you can, it's, it's not, you know, it is. And it's not fundraising taxes, you know, but it's also not a harm, that, you know, in, in, you know, eliminating programs is that a strong area to have.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to respond now, uh, it was asserted that I said, uh, the schools were really willing, and that's how I truly announced. You alluded, if you agree with us, or if you're. That money was wasted, you know, and there was not public discussion, that was not. Is, is this agreement itself behind?
Yes, it is, please.
All right. I, as all I can say, and I just report, I just, like, so, the money that the, the, my group were looking at. That money can be for the students. Um, and I have, the minute saved, one of the things that the money allocated for the stadium, a board member said that it would go to a referendum before being voted on. I couldn't call that happening, that was in the past. I would not have been myself, but it was in the minutes. It was in the minutes that, uh, that would go to a referendum. For what? Excuse me, sir, I just.
Hey, hey, excuse me, hey, Mr. Kirchner, to correct you, anything above the three million dollars would go to referendum. Okay, that was, that was, that was Mr. Silver.
Just bill, Joe, right? Just bill, we had plenty of money.
Let's go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I didn't mean to put it in, but I did think, I mean, that is, man.
Any other public comment?
Can we add your book?
No, we got, they're still coming.
Yes.
Um, I just want some clarification. Um, the Enhancement Revenue Committee is on Wednesday, I agree with that?
No. We, we are going to make, no, we are going to make an attempt, as, as we do some of these other meetings, to get them on a regular, repeating basis on the same day. Just like the Curriculum Committee is the first Thursday of every month. We may have to change that because of some other, some, but it'll be the same day every month as much as possible, so that it'll be on a calendar, you'd be able to.
Revenue enhancement is where they belong this month.
Revenue enhancement's in that, but I'm saying, moving forward, we're going to make sure the Finance Committee and all the other.
They'll be on the website.
And they'll be on the website, so you'll be able to see those. But it is, this, it is this Wednesday, Matthew Brooks at seven, at seven o'clock. Yes, it is. And in one of these committee meetings, except potentially negotiation meetings, are open to the public.
And what's the discussion of the Enhancement Revenue Committee?
The Revenue Enhancement Committee, they discussed different ways to increase rev, outside revenue sources, above and beyond what's budgeted. Um, if you remember, there was a conversation about trying to get a circus to come in, and, and, and those are the ideas, the advertisement. Um, they worked with bringing in a foundation, uh, you know, somebody to run our foundation. Those are Revenue Enhancement Committee's, uh, jobs.
Okay. Um, the fees that we pay for sports, clubs, where is that money?
General fund.
That goes into the general fund, and it's a very small portion of what it costs to run the sports programs. Very small portion. Or the clubs.
Can we have a figure, you know, how much it costs would yield a fee for sports?
Approximately a hundred and twenty thousand?
Hundred and twenty thousand.
That's between clubs and activities.
All activities, all extracurricular.
All extracurricular. That includes your sports and your clubs.
Hundred and twenty thousand.
I'll, I'll get, I'll get closer to that figure, but, uh, that's about what it is.
I don't have it.
It's close to that. I, I don't have it memorized.
It's ballpark, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I know it's not something that I'd want to do, but we're talking about remaining sports that, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you know, would be.
Correct.
That is correct.
If you look at the budget, if you look at the budget that was presented, and you go on the sheet, that is subtracted from the revenue side. Okay?
That hundred and twenty thousand includes everything, clubs, sports, the music, everything.
The marching band, because they pay that fee for activities. The drums.
Two things that are not assessing, correct?
That's correct.
But that hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that would get directly deposited in athletics, or music, or clubs, or you?
It's an offset. If, if you wanted to sit and, and, and run a, run a balance sheet and say, everything that comes from the sports goes over here, everything that comes from the activities go over here, you could do it. But it would come nowhere near close to making up what it costs to run those programs.
I know, it's hard, you know, we pay these large fees, we pay the most amount of money to collect, to be involved in the county, but that one is not directly go.
Well, again, you're, you're, you're cutting, it's a fine line. Yeah, they do go directly, because they are going to go pay some of those fees. The general fund pays.
Everything.
The coaches, the general fund pays the teachers that, that they're getting their stipends. So, yes, it does directly go toward those into, those parts of our program. It's just that it doesn't get, there isn't a budget line item, there isn't a, a, uh, a, uh, an account that says athletics, and we slide it over there. It's all paid out of the general fund, just like when you run your checkbook, you pay your mortgage. You don't have a mortgage account, you don't have a electricity account, you don't have a, you, you, you put everything into a checking account, and then you pay it.
Um, every year we talk about cutting kindergarten and sports, is there any way, or is something we're talking about in terms of sports funding itself, athletics funding itself?
Yes.
Can you clear away from this?
If, if, earlier we discussed that those are some of the things that are currently being worked on.
Right.
Outside of, outside of this thing here with committees, and it's, and it's, and right now it's in its infancy. And once it gets some traction, we'll bring it, we'll bring it back to it. But it is being worked on right now.
Mrs. Havill chairs the Revenue Enhancement Committee, and she's already sent out invitations to the, the sports boosters, the music boosters, and I think the, the club, the little run to clubs, to come and give some ideas on how, if they can help with fundraising, or if they have money, that they can contribute to adopt a program necessarily, or any other fundraising idea. So, the first meeting, and we're going to have on this one.
We've mentioned, excuse me, we've mentioned before, anyone that wants to self-fund a program, feel free to come ahead. Uh, after your MDC funded the tennis club.
And the Rotary, the year before did the, uh, that club. Interact, yes.
So, I mean, that's, that's problem solved, if someone has that.
And just as we, are you open to advertising?
Mm-hmm. Anything. We'll do anything.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're hoping.
Hi, I'm Jennifer, I'm still, I live here because it is my duty to raise a family. I wanted to move here because I wanted my house that was recently priced, but I've lived here for twenty years. I have close friends, family who grew up here, my husband-in-law, actually, with the in-laws, I have a friend who started, what they do. They talk about the end of the pride. I have a little family in the middle of the school, and my son is in elementary bar next year. And I want to know.